A call to order the regular June Planning Commission meeting. And can we please have a roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Lasky.
Here.
Commissioner Slaymaker.
Here.
Commissioner Burke.
Here.
Chair Kerpyat.
Here.
Commissioner Seidel.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
And I remind all commissioners to clearly speak into your microphone so that the audience can hear us. Onto the open forum tonight, we have a special agenda and I'd like to welcome Mayor Peter Mark to the podium.
Thank you. I didn't see the agenda, apologies. So this is our first step. We're celebrating our three planning commissioners. Wonderful. I wanted to, I'm going to be reading our resolutions, or I'm sorry, our proclamations for our three planning commissioners who are stepping down after long service. I want to thank them personally, but also on behalf of the city. I've had three properties come before the Planning Commission since I moved here to Belvedere. So I have experience on all sides of this process and the commission provides an invaluable service to the city staff, to the community as a whole, and certainly to the homeowners. And you three have helped shape this commission for a long, long time and you'll certainly leave your mark. So I want to thank you for that service. I will start with Nana Hart. The proclamation reads, whereas Nana Hart, the daughter of a Swedish diplomat, was born in Mexico City and later moved to San Francisco in 1960. And whereas Nana Hart moved to Belvedere in 1969, where she raised her three sons with her husband Phil. And whereas Nana Hart volunteered at the Belvedere Hawthorne Nursery School and the Reed Union School District, Belvedere Community Foundation, Concerts in the Park, and the Belvedere Centennial Celebration Committee. And whereas Nana Hart served on the Belvedere Parks and Open Space and Lanes Committee from 1999 to 2008. It keeps going. And whereas Nana Hart was recognized as the 2002 Belvedere Citizen of the Year. And whereas Nana Hart has studied extensively and is a master gardener and whose hands-on dedication to the beautification of Belvedere and the Greater Tiburon Peninsula includes countless hours of working on the daffodil project, Harvey Rogers Garden at Blackie's Pasture, the San Rafael Sewall Path, the Belvedere and Tiburon Landmarks Society Art and Garden Center, and her own lovely garden at her home in Belvedere. Whereas Nana Hart was appointed to the Belvedere Planning Commission in July 2008 and has served continuously until 2024, attending more than 192 meetings as well as other additional meetings of the Deer Fens Subcommittee and others, always attentive to the goal of preserving the unique multifaceted beauty of the city with an eye to the benefits of the, to the community of attractive landscaping to the benefit, to benefit building design. Now therefore, as mayor of the city of Belvedere, on behalf of the citizens of Belvedere, sincerely thank Nana Hart for her dedication, commitment, and community spirit, and join in recognizing Nana Hart for her contributions to the Belvedere community. Can I? Marcia Lasky. Whereas Marcia Lasky was born and raised in California and attended San Francisco State College, majoring business and psychology. Whereas Marcia Lasky worked after college at Joseph Magnin, volunteered for Marin Suicide Prevention, and was on the board of Dominican College in the early 1990s. And whereas Marcia Lasky was co-founder and president of Sweet Things from 1977 to 2022, also operating Sweet Things at Home in 2003 through 2022, I'm sorry. And whereas Marcia Lasky married her husband Michael in 1986 and has been a resident of Belvedere since 1979. Whereas Marcia Lasky served on the Belvedere Parks and Open Space and Lanes Committee for 12 years, guiding major beautification projects throughout the city. And whereas Marcia Lasky worked on the Centennial Committee for Belvedere in 1996 for the dinner and the fireworks celebration. Whereas Marcia Lasky is also a master gardener and as a member of the garden conservation in the United, garden conservation in the United States has had the opportunity to visit and study many of the world's leading landscape architects. And whereas Marcia Lasky has always championed keeping Belvedere green without unnecessary removal of landscaping, especially the redwood trees. And whereas Marcia Lasky lived in France for several years and studied at the Institute of Classical Architects and belongs to the French Heritage Society. And whereas Marcia Lasky was appointed to the Belvedere Planning Commission in May 2012 and served continuously until June of 2024, attending more than 144 meetings as well as additional meetings of the Deer Fens Subcommittee, the General Plan Steering Committee, and the Tree Task Force. Now therefore, as mayor of the city of Belvedere, on behalf of the citizens of Belvedere, sincerely thank Marcia Lasky for her dedication, commitment, and community spirit, and join in recognizing Marcia Lasky for her, for her contributions to the Belvedere community. Claire Slaymaker. Whereas Claire Slaymaker grew up in Beaumont, Texas, the daughter of a doctor and an interior decorator. And whereas Claire Slaymaker attended Southern Methodist University, where she developed long-term friendships with her sorority sisters and rekindled those friendships later, years later in the Aspen, Colorado area where she has a home as well. And whereas Claire Slaymaker met her husband Robert in Houston and soon after marrying, and she moved to Hong Kong where Rob worked in banking and Claire worked in interior design, a career in which she started with her mother and continues to this day and is still a member of the American Society of Designers. Whereas Claire Slaymaker and Robert moved to Mill Valley after their son Christopher was born and then to Belvedere in the 1990s. And whereas Claire Slaymaker serves as a Belvedere block captain, has been on the San Francisco Yacht Club's Women's Auxiliary Board, which she was president in 1997, and has been a member of the San Francisco MoMA Modern Arts Council. Whereas Claire Slaymaker was appointed to the Belvedere Planning Commission in July 2018 and served continuously until June of 2024, attending more than 72 meetings, always attentive to the design and aesthetics of proposed projects to ensure the best possible outcomes. Now therefore, as mayor of the city of Belvedere, on behalf of the citizens of Belvedere, sincerely thank Claire Slaymaker for her dedication, commitment, and community spirit, and join in recognizing Claire Slaymaker for her contributions to the Belvedere community. Now open the, I know I'm not stepping on your toes.
I'll open the public meeting if anyone has a comment to make.
If anyone makes any comment further?
Does anyone in the audience want to make a comment? Nancy?
My name is Nancy Chemnitzer. I serve on the city council and was on the Planning Commission for 10 years. As some of you remember, a lot of people have asked me why I spend so much time serving on commissions and committees in Belvedere and it is primarily because I get to know deeply and serve with people of your caliber, your talent, your commitment to Belvedere and to, so that together we can preserve the character of this incredible city. It's amazing to me, combined, the three of you have served on the Planning Commission for, I believe, I learned tonight, 32 years. That's hundreds of meetings. And in addition to that, I wanted to just mention tonight the special role that our master gardeners have have played on the Planning Commission. And I don't slight Claire because of course it's your incredible design eye that has served us both in landscape and interior. But I don't think the entire community really understands the deep gratitude we all have for the role that the master gardeners have played on the Planning Commission. And in this I include James Campbell, who was here previously and also served on the Planning Commission with myself. One of the important things that the Planning Commission does is to approve the final landscape plan by designating that to be done either by the chair or, in my case, by delegation to master gardeners Marcia Lasky and Nana Hart. So when I was chair, whenever that task fell to me, I was so incredibly grateful that we had master gardeners to rely on. I really hope that the community understands the importance of the landscaping in Belvedere, both in private and public spaces. And that is just one of the many reasons that I am grateful to you tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to say anything? Is there anyone on Zoom, Nancy? No, no, okay, thank you. All right, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion and, or not discussion, but for anyone who would like to make a a comment to our departing commissioners. And I know Nana's got her hand out there, so she wants to say something or do something.
Yes. But I'll.
Okay. Anyone else have anything?
It's, it's been such a pleasure to work with both Nana and Claire. And I gave them both a little something because now they'll have more time to work in their garden. I always learn something from Nana. She has a perspective, many times I thought, I've never thought of that. That's such a great perspective that she, that she comes with. And Claire has such a great design eye and she actually many times has given applicants creative solutions to very various problems. So it's wonderful to work with her. And Pat, it's been wonderful to work with you as chairman. She's an exemplary chairman, an excellent mediator, and also an expert on policy details, which is incredible. It's like she has a photogenic mind, but it's been wonderful to work with you. And I feel very lucky to have worked with a wonderful city staff that really cares about Belvedere. Thank you for trying to keep Belvedere as it is. Irene, who was here before Rebecca, and I worked very well together, as I do with Rebecca, I think. It's very great to have her back with all her experience and knowledge about Belvedere. It's very helpful. Sammy has been a great addition and always gets compliments from the applicants, how easy he's to work with and how helpful he is. And Nancy, I too. It's just a treat working with you. You have a great historical perspective. You know everything, every house, and you're invaluable resource. So thank you and you, and it's been wonderful to work with you. Thank you.
I'll just ditto that. It's been wonderful for me to spend time with all of you and get to know you and learn the comings and goings of this wonderful community and how difficult it is to try to keep it what it is today. And so and I've loved working with everybody on the commission and just want to thank you all for your patience with me early on in the process. Thanks so much.
Kevin?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to say a few words is, one, I'm very grateful for my time serving with the three of you. You were very helpful to me when I started and I've been so impressed with what you each have added to the commission while I've been on, but also more importantly, over the long tenure that you both have served. And just quickly, just in the spirit of knowing what your passion points are, I thought I would select a tree for each of you that I felt was representative of your character and a quote that I think captures what I believe is, is the essence of you. So for Marcia, I've chosen the redwood tree.
Of course.
And John Steinbeck said, "The redwoods, once seen, leave a mark or create a vision that stays with you always." So to you, Marcia. For Claire, I chose the magnolia tree because you were born in the South. And Maya Angelou once said, "Magnolias represent the gentleness and resilience we must carry within ourselves. They remind us of the power of quiet strength." So that I thought of for you. And then for Nana, I have two. One beautiful and one with a wink. The first one was by John Keats, "Tall Oaks Branch, Charmed by the Earnest Star's Dream, and so dream all the night without a stir," which is essentially all about the quiet and strength of the forest. And then one with a wink is by David Icke, "Today's mighty oak is just yesterday's nut that held its ground." Thank you both, all three.
I'd just like to offer an observation as the, kind of the newbie on the Planning Commission. I stepped into the role less than a year ago. I kind of already confided this to Marcia earlier this evening, but I feel like I've learned a lot by listening to all the planning commissioners, but in particular Marcia, Claire, Nana. I just thank you for the opportunity to sit with you and listen to your observations. Pretty soon, I guess I won't be the newbie on the commission anymore and I hope I can pass a little bit of your wisdom on to whoever comes in to fill your shoes.
Thank you. So I just want to, I just want to say that I came on the commission next month. It'll be 10 years. And Marcia and Nana were here and Claire joined us later. And I have to say the one thing about the Planning Commission, everybody thinks it's all about the projects. And when I came on, I, I knew who Marcia was, I knew who Nana was, and I knew who Claire was, but I didn't know them. And I have to say, after spending the last 10 years or so with them, that I can now call them my, my friend. And I think that's the most rewarding thing that I have gotten out of serving on the Planning Commission. They have been both, all three of them have been exemplary in their review of projects, their compassion for the city and their leadership in the community. And it's going to be a great transition for this commission to lose the three stars on the commission. And and I wish you all luck as you retire and find more time to do things than come here every third Tuesday. And it's been a total pleasure serving for you and I totally respect you. You are three very gentle, strong women that we should all admire. So thank you. Now we can move on to the meeting. Any reports from staff? No, staff.
Thank you. And just for the record, I ditto everything that was mentioned up on the dais and in the public tonight. Thank you for all that you guys have done for the city of Belvedere. So just on that note, we are going to cancel the July Planning Commission meeting. We don't have projects. I'll be out of town. So we'll sort of make the transition with the new planning commissioners. Their first meeting will be in August. And at that August meeting, we'll appoint a chair and a vice chair. And then just a quick update on Mallard Point, if you weren't at the council meeting. They are internally working on their final map. They've met with BLPOA to discuss bulkhead installation. And myself and Brian Van Son met with some of the Mallard team last week on June 13th. The goal of that June 13th meeting was to review sort of general building permit process and the permit process for demolition and the infrastructure work. That's sort of their first step in their, in their process. Also, the Mallard Development Team reached out to one of the planning commissioners and is working on revising the landscape plan per the comments made at the Planning Commission hearing. Thank you.
Are there any commission reports?
Yes.
Marcia?
I just wanted to update the report on our effort to make the tree ordinances clearer. So far, we have combined the Administrative Policy 15 with the Title 20 Code to make one document. The document states the importance that Belvedere places on the positive contribution of trees enhancing the city's landscape and preserving the urban forest. It also addresses heritage trees that will receive special consideration, which would be redwoods and oaks. We also cover sustainability details that are included. And it outlines the process for tree removal. This is still an ongoing discussion about incorporating Chapter Eight Municipal Code that has to do with preserving views that existed when a property is purchased. This does not come to the Planning Commission and it's usually settled in mediation. So when this has been decided, you will receive a full new document to discuss.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar, we need to pull item number two due to the lack of a quorum. And so may I have a motion to approve item number one?
So moved?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm recused. I was not present. Isn't it?
Okay, we're good. Nana was recused. She wasn't here last month.
Thank you. And I think we need a motion to continue item number two.
Okay, and can we have a motion to continue?
For those who are not recused from the item.
So I make a motion that we continue.
You're recused. Oh, we don't have. Twenty-eight?
No, I'm the other way around.
No, it's the other way.
Sorry, never mind.
No, you can't. Oh, yeah, you can do it.
I make a motion to continue item number two, 28 Eucalyptus Road.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. That's not a quorum either, just saying. Three.
Okay, we'll renotice it then. Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. One of those times. Okay, I'll open up the public hearing. Item number three, maybe we have a staff report, please?
Thank you. Thank you Chair Kerpyat and members of the Planning Commission. For your consideration this evening is an application for design review, variance, and revocable license to construct new stair access to an existing pier at 228 Beach Road. The property is located on a 21,000 square foot parcel that slopes east towards Belvedere Cove. In 1975, the property received approvals to construct a new pier, dock, stairs, and walkways within the city-owned tide lot, commonly referred to as the Strip. On private property, the site contains a concrete patio, concrete walkway, and wood steps. On the city-owned tide lot, the structures include the concrete path, wood steps, and retaining walls. The site has been subject to three previous landslides. The project proposes to demolish the existing concrete walkways and wood steps and construct a new set of wood stairs and landings that would run from private property onto the city tide lot, shown here in blue. Additionally, the project would replace the concrete patio on private property with a new five-inch-thick concrete slab. At the May 21st Planning Commission meeting, the applicant presented and received feedback on the proposed project. Commissioners suggested that landscaping and erosion control measures be included to stabilize the soil in areas where improvements would be made. In response to commissioners' feedback, the applicant proposes to plant three Santa Cruz Ironwood trees in 15-gallon pots, 14-point Reyes Yanotis in five-gallon pots, and point raised Manzanita ground cover. Additionally, the applicant proposes mesh netting to be installed where two of the three previous landslides occurred and would drill five additional piers at the lower portion of the stairs to address the erosion control. The proposed stairs and landings would be made of pressure-treated redwood and galvanized wire railings, and the stairs would stand six to seven feet above existing grade at their highest points. The project requests a variance to allow a 19-square-foot portion of the steps to exceed four feet in height within the rear yard setback. Additionally, the project requests a revocable license to allow new private improvements within the city-owned tide lot. A revocable license for private use of public right-of-way may be granted in the discretion of city council when there is some benefit to the public. As a gift to the public, the Belvedere Land Company conveyed shoreline property As a gift to the public, the Belvedere Land Company conveyed shoreline property along Belvedere Cove to the city in 1896, commonly referred to as a strip. The deed places a series of restrictions on the use of the city-owned tide lot. One restriction paraphrased states, no private structures other than private wharves, boathouses or bathing houses shall ever be permitted and none shall ever, none shall be added to those pre-existing. For the planning commission and property owners' consideration, staff notes page four of the 1896 Belvedere Land Company deed, which includes a reversion clause stating if any conditions of this grant when made are violated, the said strip of land shall revert to this company. Staff believes the design review and variance findings can be made. The three prior landslides and steep terrain are special circumstances applicable to the property and granting a variance will not constitute a special privilege as other properties within the vicinity have been granted similar variances. Additionally, staff believes a revocable license provides a benefit to the public as the new drilled piers and landscaping would reinforce and stabilize city land, which has been prone to landslides in the past. However, after the staff report was released, staff had further conversations with the city attorney, the city's attorney. We want to make sure that the commission is aware of the reversion clause discussed in the previous slide. Should the commission be in a position to approve the entitlements tonight, staff has included draft resolutions in your packets. Thank you, and I'll have to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Alex?
So I just wanted to see if you could be a little more explicit about the element of structure that you couldn't make a recommendation on. Is it the connection to the existing dock that is being rebuilt?
I'm sorry, a recommendation on?
Well, in, in reading this, the staff report, I thought there was a finding or recommendation that you weren't able to make regarding a, a new portion of construction. And maybe I misread it, but.
There, there was a few typos and errors in the, in the report about the recommendations. We, we were, in the, in the staff report, we made the recommendations for approval on all the entitlements.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
I, I have a question also.
Nana, enter your microphone.
I also have a question with that. On page three in the staff report under the Belvedere Land Company conveyance, it says that at the time of transfer, the deed prohibits all private structures except wares, boathouses and bathhouses. How could, how can the city interpret that? If it doesn't allow connection to the people that built these boathouses, bathhouses and what have you? Was it intended to be freestanding and no connection? Or it, it just seems like something is missing there?
I think that's the predicament that we're in, right? We have these piers that are in the water, over the water. And we also have a deed that restricts structures to connect. And so I think, you know, we have to evaluate the benefit of the revocable license versus the language of the deed, which is why sometimes we have approved structures in the city tide lot that provide connection to piers.
Good.
We haven't approved things like decks, right? That are sort of more superfluous than a stairway connecting to a pier.
I'm just wondering, could one go back to the company as that little thing you were showing? And say, can you please include something in here so we, so it doesn't have to be discussed next time? Some stairs are built to connect boathouses, bathhouses, et cetera. Because it seems ridiculous that it should be brought up every time we have something like this coming up.
Yeah, I mean, the, the company is the Belvedere Land Company, certainly can, yeah, reach out to them. I don't, I would have to maybe defer to Anne on how you would amend that deed, but.
Marcia?
I just have one.
Marcia, enter your microphone, please.
It is. Part of the deed also says that the city currently should be maintaining and preserve the strip as a public park. And that's not done either, is it? Am I correct?
In terms of maintenance of the specific.
For a public park?
I mean, we don't, I don't know if our public works guys go down there at low, low tide and weed whack or, you know, remove anything. But we certainly make sure that it is accessible. But we are not, you know, quote unquote, maintaining it, that to my knowledge.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Anyone else have questions? So what you're asking us tonight is to evaluate the deed restriction versus the ability to somebody to connect to an existing pier, which they have a dock lease to. And that they had access, but it got washed out by a landslide or a portion of their access got washed out by a landslide that is unstable, according to reports we've been given. And so how do we handle when, I think it was maybe last year, that we approved a dock, or not a dock, but a brand new staircase down through the strip to a shared dock with, without much hesitation? So how, how do we balance that, you know? We did it primarily because the people have to have access to their dock. So how, how do we let one do that exact thing? And then tell someone else they can't do it? That's, to me, that's not an equal distribution of property rights.
Sure, I agree. So it would be the risk of the land being reverted back to the company, right? That's the risk that you're considering, which we evaluated in the past and taken the risk, right, by approving it.
If I may add, I do, I do remember that particular project. At the time, I was not aware of these conditions in the deed. I hadn't seen the deed before. I would say that the way you reconcile them is to acknowledge that that past approval was an error made without knowing what the deed conditions were or that there was a reversionary clause.
But the staff knew about the deed, we all knew about, well, Alex, you weren't here. But we all knew about the deed because we've had several other projects come before us, which we, some we have just turned down because it was brand new. But when it comes to the existing, we kind of take a look at it, that it was existing and they need to rebuild it. So I, you know, it's, it's, it's a balance that we're going to have to decide.
Nice question, Pat, I wasn't here for that. Was that to replace what was an existing staircase?
What?
The one that you were citing before, the, the new staircase, but that was replacing one that existed before?
Hmm, no, no, it was a shared dock and they had a shared staircase down. And the shared staircase down was dilapidated and it got torn down. And so one homeowner wanted to have his own access to the shared dock. And then the other homeowner is going to put their own shared access to the dock.
One homeowner had to access the adjacent property to get to the dock. And so.
It was the same staircase.
Right, on somebody else's property. So they made an agreement to make their own access to their docks. I can't remember if they shared the pier, their pier.
I mean, my perspective is, is again, I think it's a bigger issue that the city has to deal with at some point and go back to the land company and amend the deed. But I think in the meantime, if, if something already exists and people are repairing.
So question time, not opinion time, sorry.
Okay. Do you want me to phrase it as a question?
Yeah.
So would you agree that if somebody were repairing an existing deck, that that would be staying consistent with decisions that were made in the past? So those were already approved. They may have fallen into disrepair, whether it be by age or by some natural force such as a landslide. And that we have typically allowed owners to repair those connections to the docks.
I, I would say certainly stairs, not decks. We have.
Not decks, right, but staircases to connect.
To access a pier.
Exactly.
Yes.
Okay, just so that, so this would be consistent with those previous decisions that we've made.
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. May we hear from the applicant, please?
I'm Roger Hartley, project engineer. The main difference between what you see tonight and what we had last meeting was the addition of the landscaping, as staff alluded to in response to the commission's request that we do that. And to describe a little bit further, we'll be removing existing portions of the old access, which was concrete steps and pathways on grade. We'll be replacing that impermeable area with the landscape planting. So maybe not entirely clear on the plan where that landscaping goes, but the intent is to revert that paved area to landscaped areas. Be using ground cover, seaanotes, a couple of trees. And there's also, as you can see from the photos, a large coverage of existing native plants, ecky seedums pretty much covers the hillside. So the end result will be pretty much a green hillside, other than the new stairs that we're proposing. I want to make one other direction. The netted areas, we are not proposing to do that work. I highlighted those areas of landscape on the plan where it may be appropriate to stabilize this portion of the, of the landslide areas. And in fact, the geotechnical engineer has recommended such. But we don't feel, and we feel very strongly, that it should not be the responsibility of the private property owners to maintain public land, maintain or repair public land. In fact, they're already burdened with the cost of rebuilding stairs, which came about because of the landslides on public land. So those areas I identified as to be netted by others, not be a part of this project.
Okay, any questions for the applicant? Nana?
Can I ask, do you recommend that city look at it and put the netting in then to stabilize the slide areas?
Should the city look at it?
As, as they are the owners of it?
I, I would think so.
Okay. Yeah, no, just.
Would be appropriate.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? I have one question. I thought I read, maybe mis, misread, that you also added some additional piers.
Yeah, I, thank you. I forgot to mention that.
Yeah.
At the request of the geotech, when he reviewed the plans, he suggested that we add more piers further down the slope. And those will help to add some stability to those areas that they haven't slid yet. But they, by pinning them into the ground, that should add some additional stability to the areas that are still stable.
And my understanding is the construction of the stairs that you're going to be using piers in some of the locations actually on the stairs, you know, those ones that, what, what do they call them? Heel, helico, what do they call them? You know, the piers?
Helical.
Helical, helical.
No, they're not helical, helical, they're all drilled piers.
Yeah, yeah. But are you using some of those to construct the stairs? So that the stairs actually will add also stability as you, to the land?
We're not using helical piers at all.
Okay.
They're all drilled piers.
Oh, drill, are you using drill piers on the construction of the stairs?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's where I'm trying to go.
They're all supported on drilled piers.
Okay, drill piers, but forget the other word, it can't say it anyway.
Yes.
Okay, so that actually building of the, the stairs will add to the stability of the, the landscape?
Absolutely. It's an extension of the line of drilled piers and grade beams near the top of the property that is intended to protect the house from sliding due to the landslide below that. So it's same technology and same idea of pinning the, the structure deep into the ground. And those piers will probably be eight to 12 feet into bedrock. So they'll provide lots of stability.
Okay, and you would say right now that the area where the stairs were failed because of the landslide, that it's not a safe situation?
It's very unsafe, yes.
Okay, thank you, just clarifying. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. I'll now open the. Oh, sure.
Len Rifkind, Rifkind Lawn Mediations, Tenor Fell for the applicant. I was listening with some interest about the discussion about the deed and all the concerns about what it means and can you build and all of that. So I will note in the staff report on page two, it says the commissioners also agreed that the project did not conflict with the intent of the 1896 deed. It's actually 1897, but who's counting from 125 years ago? But in any event, so, I mean, you all had a fairly robust discussion in your last meeting on that topic. But I thought it would be helpful to just spend a couple of minutes actually looking at the actual language of the deed from 1897. Because with due respect to staff, we got a couple of snippets up on the board, but it's always helpful to read the whole language of the deed. And, and I'm just going to summarize a couple of key points. So this is 1897 text that I'm, I'm looking at. And it says, it's the intention of the company, the Belvedere Land Company, to convey to the town, the land for, to the people for a general public beach, parkway or waterfront. So the intent is, so the public can walk, you know, as we all know, you can't go there on high tide. It's only at low tide that, that you can even go there. But the intent was for access to the, where, when you're at low tide, that public can walk along there. The majority of this staircase is either on the private land of 228 Beach or on the steep upslope portion of this land. So the vast majority of it, I don't think, has any conflict whatsoever with the deed. I think that's the main point. And so then we, that's on page one of the deed. On page two of the deed, it says, now there's, they have reservations and then they have restrictions. So reservations is what did the Belvedere Land Company reserve to themselves? And they listed a few things like catching fresh water. So I don't think the staircase prevents catching water. Number two, sewer pipes, of course, not a great place to put sewer pipes. Although I can say in the Belvedere Tiburon Peninsula, I've seen sewer pipes along the water, probably was done decades ago. We wouldn't do that today. Number three, one or more public wharves. I don't think there's too many wharves left on this stretch, but certainly the staircase doesn't prevent a public wharf if someone wants to build it. Number four, the Belvedere Land Company wanted to control travel over Beach Road so long as the company maintained buses to and from Belvedere. I don't think Belvedere Land Company has buses going out along Beach Road any longer. And five, they want to collect rents for some cottages that apparently existed on the tideland lots at that time. So those lots, so, so there's no conflict for this staircase at 228 Beach with any of the reservations by the company. Then we turn to page three. And page three lists a number of conditions that people are concerned about. And so some of those conditions include, it says, this is the one that I think has everyone of interest. It says, no private structures other than private wharves, boathouses or bathhouses now upon said beach. So again, I think that the focus was, okay, let's not build a bunch of new things on the beach that might interfere with the public, but we've got a staircase coming down the hillside. So no conflict there. Second, it says, no private structures on the tidelands. And this is an important one, no saloons or selling of intoxicating liquors. God forbid we should do that on the tideland. So I don't think the staircase is proposing that. And it says, number four, and this is the hard one, where the town, it says that the strip of land shall be improved, preserved and maintained perpetually by the town as a public park and waterfront. So as you heard from. So as you heard from your planning director, that city probably hasn't done that particularly well over the last century and a quarter, maybe some weed whacking, but not a lot of maintenance. And in fact, we've had two big landslides that have occurred. That's principally on city land. So I would submit to you, based upon the plain language of the deed, the actual deed, there's no conflict between approving this project and the Belvedere land deed. And I would entertain any questions the commission might have.
Any questions for Mr. Rifkin? Nope, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll open the public meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on the subject? See none? Anyone on Zoom? Nope. Okay. I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission to discuss. Can we start with you, Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Into the microphone.
I am. It's on.
There you go.
Yes. I wasn't here for the last meeting, and I know that this was really thoroughly discussed. And it seems like the takeaway from that was that more landscaping plans were requested. Till maybe now we got a new reading of the deed. And I must say, I feel pretty convinced by the reading of the deed that these stairs that are more a repair of landslides that have occurred on city property and are endangering the whole uphill slope. And my take on the city's view on giving a variance or a revocable license, that it should be a benefit to the public. And I think, looking at it as it's proposed, I don't think that the city could think of any nicer public benefit than having some extremely expensive and in real need repair job or repair work being done by a private citizen who is trying to save his house from coming down the hill and connecting to his, his and hers dock that is perfectly legal. I cannot see how, I cannot make the findings for this proposal, especially with the additional landscaping and clarification of more piers and removal of the old cement staircase foundation that is just falling downhill anyway. So this project definitely has my yes vote.
Thank you. Commissioner Seidel?
Thank you. I think in this application, we have a homeowner who is making a very good effort to protect their property from a somewhat dangerous situation. It involves both public lands and private lands, as we know. But I can't imagine not supporting this project. I think it needs to go forward. I commend the owners of the property for undertaking this. It's a beautiful piece of property. It deserves to be functional. There's ample precedent for having stairs and connections for a dock. And, you know, if, if we weren't to recommend or make the findings in favor of this project, I worry that, you know, you'd have this isolated structure of the dock out in the bay with no connection. And, and that dock is a problematic issue to be maintained. So I'll be able to make the findings on this project. And I do want to say appreciate the extra effort you've put into adding the landscaping and some hillside protection. It looks like the right thing to do.
Thank you. Commissioner Lasky?
The bottom line is here, kind of the, the owners are paying lease on a dock they can't get to and they can't use it because of a landslide on public land and also private land. Most of it is on public land and the public is not repairing it. So it's very dangerous for the public to even pass on the, on the strip because cement could come down on them as could, as can a hillside. So I, I can make all the findings because I think, as I agree with fellow commissioners, that the, the slides on the land really make it very dangerous for the public. And these changes also do not impede the public access, which is the whole intent of the strip. The public is still able to pass under the piers and proceed on the strip. And by repairing it, it takes away the danger to the public. There is a lot of unstable cement that can fall down the hill. And I think it's a great improvement restoring the planted area. That's a big improvement from last time with the added landscape. I just, once, kind of an aside, I don't think they'll let you put manzanita, but you can find, you know, another, another ground cover. But they're trying to give stability to the hillside that benefits everyone, the public and the private. So I can, I can make all the findings for this project.
Thank you. Commissioner Slavemaker?
Yes, I also agree with my fellow commissioners. I think this is an easy answer to what certainly needs to happen because of the dangerous situation. I think there's special circumstances that must be addressed when making a decision relating to a variance. And, and this is a perfect example of a situation where a variant should be granted. It checks all the boxes as far as I'm concerned. So without any ado, I also agree that I can make all the findings.
Sorry, Commissioner Burke?
No worries. I also, I appreciate very much that the applicant has come back and responded to the comments that the commissioners had made in the last meeting. That doesn't always happen. So we appreciate that very much. And I do think that it will improve the plan and just ensure that the stairs stay where you want them to be in the future. I'm choosing to look at this project a little bit different. I think of this as a repair to something that already existed. So I don't think there's a need to debate what the deed says right now because the decision to let somebody build stairs in this area to that dock was already decided before this meeting. I don't agree with Mr. Rifkin's assessment of the deed. I think that's saved for a later date when the city can think about the legal ways to further clarify the deed. But regardless, again, I appreciate what the owners have done to try and put forward a really sensible plan to replace stairs that already existed. I think they're being very thoughtful about also shoring up the hillside wherever they can. I certainly can make the findings for design review, the variance, and also the revocable license.
Thank you. I also visited the site and met with the applicant, had conversations with Mr. Hartley. And I can agree with everything that my fellow commissioners have said. I feel that the applicant has the right to access their dock. I think that due to the multiple landslides that the area, the revocable license was in, that it's no longer practical to have it there. And it means the stairs have to be moved. I think the benefit to the city is, is that the applicant is stabilizing the hillside by additional drilled piers and landscaping. And they're also reducing the amount of square footage in the revocable license, thereby giving more land back to the city. And, and also the, the dock's not being touched. So the access underneath the dock is there and has never been in question. But the way the stairs have to be constructed at the height they are to get over the existing retaining walls, that if someone were ever able to scale the cliff and they would be able to walk underneath the stairs. So it does not impede public access now or in the future if the city decides to develop it. Therefore, I can also make all the findings for design review, the variance, and the revocable license recommendation to city council. I also agree with, I believe it was Commissioner Hart that said, we get this question over and over again. And it is something that the commission is not capable of changing and that it's something city council needs to address and give further guidance, whether they choose to go to a lease kind of agreement or if they want to alter the deed restriction to make it more applicable to the 20th century. That's up to city council. So I'd like to make sure that in our recommendation on the revocable license, that those comments are made because it's not fair to applicants to have to face whether they're going to be the trial victim on upholding the deed to the letter of the law versus practicality for something that already existed. And, and so I think they need to address this so that this commission has a better, clearer, and the staff has a clearer way of guiding people through this process. So with that, I'd like to have a motion for number one, please.
Yes, I move to adopt the resolution approving design review to construct a new staircase on the city-owned tidlot for the property at 228 Beach Road.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I move to adopt the resolution approving a variance to allow the structure to encroach in the rear yard setback at 228 Beach Road.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I move to recommend approval to the city council of a revocable license for improvements located in the city-owned tidlot for the property at 228 Beach Road.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Could I just make a comment to Pat's comment about the amending the deeds? Maybe this will be helpful. I'm a structural engineer and in our terminology, anything that resists the force of gravity and earthquakes is considered a structure. But I have to believe in 1896, when they were talking about docks and access to the docks, they weren't thinking of stairs as structures as such. And, you know, times change and people have different ideas of what the word structure is. Today, probably is not the basis for making that recommendation back in 1896. So I would think that maybe you could craft language that said, other than, than stair access to be part of what considers structures.
Thank you. We'll leave that up to our city council or our city attorney to figure that one out. And thank you. Have a nice evening. And I also want to say I appreciate our attorney and Danforth with giving us the legal opinion. And I truly respect that, but I think that we made a practical decision. So moving on. So we're going to say adieu to some people.
I need to recuse myself, yes, for 28 and 30. Good night.
Likewise, I have to recuse myself as I live nearby. And thank you. I have asked the council if it's appropriate for me to sit in and listening to the next item because it has to do with property on my street. And I'm just interested in seeing what's this other big construction project is going to be. And she advised me that I could sit in chamber.
Well, you're a private citizen now.
I'm just going to move into a chair there.
Okay, can we have a staff report for 30 Eucalyptus, please?
Thank you again, Chair Carepia and members of the planning commission. For your consideration this evening, is an application for design review for a residential addition and remodel at 30 Eucalyptus Road. The subject property is on a steeply sloped 26,000 square foot parcel in the R15 zoning district. The site is developed with a two-level residence, attached carport, and swimming pool. The subject property is surrounded by single-family homes on all sides. The project proposes a 1,473 square foot first floor addition at the rear of the residence, new wood decking at the first level, and conversion of the 364 square foot carport into an enclosed two-car garage. Additional improvements include re-roofing the residence, new windows and doors at the addition, and new exterior lighting. The project proposes to construct the first floor addition beneath the footprint of the second floor building and deck. Here, the first floor plan shows the outline of the addition in blue and the footprint of the second floor and deck above in orange. The project would add three windows to the addition and one window at the garage on the west elevation. The project would add one 12, 12-foot by eight-foot sliding glass door and outdoor barbecue at the east elevation. And the project would install four sliding glass doors and four casement windows on the south elevation. Facing Eucalyptus Road, the garage would be nine feet, 10 inches tall to match the existing carport and include horizontal sandwood panels. Colors and materials include off-white siding and trim to match the existing residence, a charcoal gray standing seam metal roof, gray wood decking, and vertical black metal railing. The project proposes to install seven new exterior lights and replace four existing lights at the garage, entry, and first floor additions. The fixtures will be made of metal and cone-shaped downlights with a black or bronze finish. The project plans note, three trees would be removed. Since the plans were submitted, the applicant determined that only one oak tree would be removed as part of the project. The applicant proposes to plant one replacement tree on site. The project is exempt from CEQA. And as detailed in the draft resolution, staff finds the addition and remodel to comply with the zoning ordinance and general plan policies and recommends the planning commission adopt the resolution granting design review. Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Sammy, I just have one quick question. Were you able to, was the applicant able to get back to you regarding what color off-white and charcoal gray they're proposing? Oh, I see.
The charcoal gray, not yet. The off-white siding, yes.
Okay, perfect. So they didn't specify the dark gray?
Not yet, and I'll follow up with the applicant on that.
All right. Thank you. Can we please hear from the applicant?
Good evening, Chair Carepia, members of the commission. My name is Antonio Castellucci, resident of beautiful Belvedere for the last 11 years. And we purchased this house, actually, we are the second owners of this house. From, we purchased it from the original owner. And when we purchased it, it was for our daughter Maria that was getting married. So we bought this beautiful house and, and we immediately renovated it. It was a three-bedroom, two-bath home. And we, but the bedrooms were a little bit small. So, so I figure, you know what, we can always expand it later. Let's make it a two-bedrooms, two-and-a-half baths, and that's what we did. And so. Let's make it a two-bedrooms, two-and-a-half baths. And that's what we did. And so now, she lived there about four years and then moved to the wine country, Napa Valley. So we've been renting the house ever since. And now we came to the time that I think it's a, a good time to do this addition and improve this house, really, that it's going to be a beautiful place in, in, in Belvedere, and especially on that west side of the town with a spectacular view, I think, would be really, really nice. My, my architect, Gary Khan, is on, is on Zoom, I believe. So any questions related to the, the building, he would be able to answer for you. I also wanted to, to thank Sammy in particular, because we worked with him closely, and he's been fantastic, very helpful, very professional. It was a pleasure to do, you know, working with you. Thank you. I'd like to give you, in, in reference, we were looking at the trees and we, we found out that it's actually one, one tree with two shoots. And that's the only oak tree that we would remove because it's, first of all, it's very close to the house. It touches the house now. I think for safety purposes, I think would be even, even better. I also, after we get these approvals, I'm not sure if the, if the neighbors, our immediate neighbors are aware of this work. So I will definitely contact them and, and show them what we are going to do and the timeline and everything that, you know, we want to make him part of what, what we are doing there, I think is important. And, and finally, I realized that the pressure that the state is putting on you to, for affordable housing and just to make a little difference, you know, just to be able to help in a, in a very small way, we are, we are able to put a, a junior A D U as part of this addition. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
Question. Antonio, I just had a question. So the, now you're just removing one oak tree. Is that the one closest to the house, correct?
Correct, yes.
And you're leaving the other one that was farther out from the deck?
Yeah, and also will, will, will stay. Only one oak tree will be removed.
Okay, but, but when you say that they're connected, those two trees aren't connected, no?
There actually is one tree with two shoots. That's the way it is, but it's only one tree.
Kind of V's out at the bottom?
Yeah. So that, so the one tree that you're taking out is the one that's really close to the deck, and you're leaving another one that is out. Okay, thank you.
And I also want to add that this backyard, there are so many beautiful oak trees. So we'll be able to trim them really nice and so more light will come into the rooms, which I think is important as well.
So when you're looking at this image, the oak tree on the left that is farther down the slope, that's the one you're leaving, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll close. Oh, anyone on Zoom? Any questions for the architects on Zoom? No, no. Okay, so I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Seidel?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Castellucci, for the description of kind of the history of the house. I think this fits into what I would say kind of a normal evolution of a house of that era. Houses that were built in the late 60s, 70s, they were done to a different standard. And so what you've done is you've removed some of the bedrooms and expanded bathrooms and other elements of the house. And, and now you're sort of taking the next step in the evolution and placing additional bedrooms and facilities under the house. And I think something that I can appreciate about it is that that's just dark space under the existing mass of the house. So you're not really expanding the footprint of the house. You're meeting the zoning regulations. It seems like a very good fit for the site. So I'm in favor of the plan. I can make the findings in favor of it.
Thank you. Commissioner Lasky?
This is very simple, because since you're keeping the tree, I really don't have much to say.
And it's her last say.
I, I think, just so you know, you should maybe submit. Good idea. When you, you can submit, the architect can submit a landscape plan, just, just so you show where the other tree is, is going. But this, this expansion is really a good use of the space that exists beneath the house. It doesn't expand the footprint, fits under the deck. I think it's a very tasteful design, and I can make the findings for a design review.
Commissioner Slaymaker?
Yes, I agree with my fellow commissioners. I think it's a lovely property in, in itself. And the proposed additions fit so well within the footprint of the existing home without affecting privacy issues of the surrounding neighbors. I think the addition of the deck, decks will give an open field to the new space and a great egress to the wonderful swimming pool there on the side. I think the plan gives the home the perfect complement to the existing space. I guess that I would, the only thing I would request is, since there are quite a few windows on the backside, that the Belvedere Avenue side, that maybe a little more landscaping to, to shield those larger windows would be something that I would love to see. Otherwise, I can make all the findings.
Thank you. I also was able to visit the project with Mr. Castellucci, Castellucci. And I think, as all the commissioners have said, this is a very tasteful upgrade with very little impact, since you're developing in an area that's below the house already in majority. And the only thing that I would request is that we have the color of the dark gray, which is, I don't know, an acceptable color, but just so that we have that color on file. And as Marsha Lasky said, where the replacement tree would go. And that would all be in your final landscape approval. So I can also make the findings for the design review. And with that,
I'll make the motion.
And thank you for the J A D U.
Go ahead.
Adopt the resolution granting designer view to construct a 1,473 square foot residential addition at 30 Eucalyptus Road.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Congratulations. Thank you. And that concludes our June meeting, as we say farewell to our three lovely ladies from the commission. We'll miss you. You are a lady. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And with that, I, can we have a motion to close the meeting?
I make a motion to close the meeting.
All in favor? Aye. Okay.